Okay, are we ready to go there?
Come on, I left my pen down here.
Tell them that we're ready.
Yeah, except I could use a pen, something to write with.
That's right.
Something to write with, yeah.
Do you have an extra pen, Christine?
Yeah. Again, I left it in the closed session.
If you don't give it, is that me who will say anything? We don't give a...
(laughing) Sure. I have a pencil.
That's good enough.
I can get a pen in a sec.
That's good.
Pencil's good. City clerk, if you have to return.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, you guys ready? Gentlemen, Christine, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so you're ready? All right.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're starting at 7:30 tonight. We had interviews for Planning Commission, and I'll announce that in a few, a couple of minutes. Welcome to the San Carlos City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting of July 27, 2009. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any changes to the order of agenda this evening, gentlemen? Staff, any changes? Okay. Okay, moving on. Item three, report from closed session. Mr. Rubens, any report?
We haven't concluded any of the closed session items. There'll be a report later in the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Council's communications and announcements, gentlemen? Mr. Ramad, anything tonight?
Mr. Mayor, two quick points. A few nights ago last week, there was a meeting from the sheriff's office regarding outreach, regarding the jail. I wanted folks to know, I got a couple of emails about this, so I thought I'd, to some extent, respond to that in public. Four out of the five council members did attend the meeting at various points in time, and I did want to acknowledge that the sheriff actually has a fairly tough job. He does have an overcrowded facility right now. Hopefully, he's not going to get a federal mandate to start letting folks go, and we do want to acknowledge that his job is public safety, and the folks who are in public safety, we do thank them. There was also a question about where could residents of San Carlos direct their feelings, and I had recommended that polite and firm letters be sent directly to the sheriff at Redwood City. The second point, last week, there was a study conducted by Director Wile regarding the Holly Street study and what to do with it. Just wanted to say that a few of us were in the audience, and there were a lot of good ideas that were brought forward. I would tell folks that this is, to some extent, watching sausage get made, so it's not pretty, but it is the public process. A lot of ideas came out, and patience is going to be needed as we move forward with this, but I did want to commend Director Wile for handling a meeting that had a lot of passion behind it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Grok, got any comments tonight?
Well, I'll follow up first with the sheriff's meeting, because I also attended that. It was very well-attended the night I went here in our own facilities, at our library. It was pretty much full, the room was full, and I thought the sheriff's support staff and the sheriff himself presented the issue very thoroughly, and, you know, with a lot of honesty, and looking at all the various sites. I did notice in the paper, as a follow-up, that it looked like the site out at the, next to the Shoreway facility is, they've got, they see a real issue there with the airport and the height limitation and the flight paths of the airplanes and so forth. I won't say they've taken it off their list altogether, but from my reading of the article, it looked like that put that site pretty low on the list. They're still the one on Industrial Road, which actually, in their order of things, the Shoreway, I believe, originally came out higher on the list than the Industrial Road. But again, I thought the sheriff and his staff did a great job, and it's not an easy decision to make, and I think we need to be careful on just jumping to any position one way or the other. We have to allow him a fair shake, and we'll have to look at it honestly if it ever comes our way to have any decision on it. Also attended a meeting of the, our Trails Committee, and I just wanted to give a quick bullet point on the things that they're working on. They are with the trails in San Carlos, which mostly are, you know, out in our open-space areas on the border of town, if you will, out towards 280 and up off of Crestview and that area there. But they're working on connectivity, on easements, whether they exist or not and who has control of them, legal issues with other agencies like the San Francisco Water Department, for instance. They're looking at also improvement within our own parklands to our existing trail, trails that we have now, and fundraising and awareness, they're trying to take that on. And lastly, the EIR process and surveying that would have to be done before building that. That's why they're looking at fundraising, because to do an EIR, to do surveying, and those things before even build a trail, takes some money to do it, and they don't necessarily want to just lean totally on the city for that money. They, it sounds like anyways, they're looking at doing some fundraising of their own. So that was very interesting, and I think that issue will come up again of trails at our council retreat. They want to get, you know, some other thing. They're already on our strategic plan, but they want to get some other things on the strategic plan. And then, two other items. One, I attended a while ago a library committee meeting that Randy, actually, is our representative, and I raised an issue of the availability of material to minors, because my son came home with some things that I was concerned about, CDs, music, and so forth, that had some pretty vulgar language, and the things that the songs were about were pretty vulgar. And so I went to the meeting and spoke to that. I did get a letter back from the county, talking about what their policies are, and I was going to ask the council that we, as a council, look at this and perhaps respond to it, and we might want to, we're a member of the JPA, we may want to have some input into what we feel those policies ought to be, and then send that forward if we want to make any changes at all. I think you can tell from my perspective and my experience, I would like to see some changes made. So I was going to see that the city staff gets a hold of this letter that I received back, and if we could agendize this for a council meeting somewhere in the future, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I'll, certainly, staff can get the letter and see if we can find a time in the fall, hopefully in the next couple of months, because I know in August, we're only going to have one meeting, and then maybe we can agendize this and speak about it.
Yeah, the plan currently is to have one meeting in August, and that meeting, hopefully, will be dedicated towards the general plan. It's a huge, that and the climate action plan.
Sure.
So we would probably be looking at September or October, if that's okay.
That'd be fine.
All right.
And then the last issue that I had is, for years, on council, you know, I've been on council for eight years, and gotten these letters from the group Fall and Gong, asking to be involved, come speak, and so forth, and I've always ignored them until this year, and I went. I went to their event up in the city and spoke to their group about their issues and what it is they're after, which is basically just human rights and recognition of their activities by the communist government, to not be harassed and tortured, and a lot of things these people go through because they want to practice this. And when it, I thought about it later after attending, and I thought, you know, we are pretty connected, if you will, as a city goes, with China, because we have a sister city or two, and that's something else, I think, usually, I don't, you know, I don't believe in our council getting involved in international affairs and so forth, but we are a sister city with a city in China, and the cities in China, the government there, it's communist-controlled. I don't know to what extent the local cities are involved in what happens to people that are practicing Fall and Gong, but to me, if there is any blood on their hands, if you will, then I think we should sever those ties. I don't believe in being involved in a, with others who are persecuting and torturing individuals for their personal beliefs and the practices that they want to be involved in, so perhaps sometime in the future, we could look at that as well.
I have to disagree with you on that one.
That's fine.
You and I have usually agreed on the international thing, you know, pretty much, I agree with you, the first statement that you made, and I'm sort of still of that ilk. I mean, I certainly not going to, I'm not condoning, obviously, any of the things that you mentioned that are going against people at all, but I really think we need to stick to a lot of, sort of, the knitting that we have, and we've got an awful lot of items to talk about, and I think, I honestly believe that that one, I mean, everyone's entitled to their opinion, and I respect yours, but I go back to my basic thought of, I think we need to, that one isn't one that I would want to bring back to the council personally. So if there's someone else who would like to do that, we can agendize it, otherwise, I'd pretty much like to leave it there. So I guess that's where it's going to be for that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Royce, any comments tonight?
Yeah, I have one item. As many of you know, council gets very involved. One of our jobs is to look at a lot of our rates. We have a lot of services we charge for, and of course, in the utilities areas, there's garbage and sewage and so forth. We spend a lot of time, we try to keep those rates down, we try to benchmark them with other cities and so forth. I do want to just spend two minutes talking about water rates. We have nothing to do with water rates. Things like PGE and Water, separate utility that's managed by a separate organization. But there were, there has been a letter received over the last week, and one of the things that caught my attention is, this is part of their normal approval to the California Public Utility, 18 months prior to rates going up. They're anticipating rates going up 17.7% in 2011. Over the three years, from 11 to 13, about a 31% increase. So I called up the manager that had the letter and so forth. They were very, at California Water Service, very responsive, very good. They talked about flyers coming out, so on your water bill this month, I just got mine a couple days ago, it talks a little bit about rates, but it doesn't give a lot of meat to why rates are going up. And so I did a little bit more research, got some financials, and basically, I found that the water company continues to make huge capital investments in the infrastructure, the water mains and the pipes and so forth. There's a lot of additional rate increases from conservation, all the programs and education they do, plus by selling less water when you conserve, your rates have to be higher. And the third item is they continue, of course, to have higher labor cost, people cost benefits, retirements, and so forth. And so my recommendation is, I just wanted to use this forum just to let all the citizens and all of our households know that there is a process. If you go to either the California, calwater.com, which is their website for our local service, or there's the California, let's see, it's the, hang on here, the cpu.cal.gov, which is the California Public Utility Commission. There is a process, it is a public process, they want public input, but if no one speaks up, these rates are probably going to go through, it's going to cost a lot more for water in the future. And I will end by saying, I would hope that there would be some input. I'm personally going to input it, because I look at what we've done for our city in trying to almost defer most of our capital costs. We've come down with headcount, we've reduced benefits and retirement costs and so forth. We are really trying to control costs. Water's important, they have all sorts of mandates coming to them, but I would surely hope that there would be some good efforts and good people looking into what they're doing and just trying to keep the cost of living fair and down as much as possible that we can for our people in this town. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Royce. The only thing I have tonight is, we had, before the meeting, we interviewed 11 applicants for one planning commission position, and as I said during the meeting, I probably felt that any of the 11 could do a wonderful job for us. We're so blessed in San Carlos that when we have openings in our commissions and groups and panels, that we have a multitude of folks that volunteer, and the council considered all 11 applicants and discussed it quite honestly in great detail, and we all had our discussion about it, and the selection for the council for the open seat on the planning commission is Karen Clapper. So Ms. Clapper will be joining the planning commission, I assume, at their next meeting or meeting after that, depending on how the process goes. All right? I'm not sure when Mr. Phillips' term is up.
Well, I believe it's already expired.
Okay, so hopefully the next meeting, then she'll be filling that spot. Okay. Moving on, presentations, 5A, San Carlos Library, 10 Five A, San Carlos Library, tenth anniversary celebration, August 1st and 2nd, 2009. I think our library manager, Mr. Malakwa, I can never do this name.
Just Chet.
Chet, that's right, Chet. Malakwa, I was going to say. Malakwa. Pardon my pronunciation, Chet.
I'm used to it.
Malakwa, thank you. As an Italian, I should be better at that.
It's a Polish name, so.
No, I understand, but anything with a vowel at the end, I should be good at that. So go ahead, I'm sorry. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli and council members. This coming month marks the tenth anniversary of the opening of the new San Carlos Library. I guess at this point, we should stop calling it new. This Saturday and Sunday, August 1 and 2, we'll be celebrating our anniversary by offering a wide variety of exciting events and invite you and the citizens of San Carlos to join us in the celebration. We kick off festivities this Saturday at 10:15 with a very special guest storytime reader, Mayor Bob Grisilli. If any of the rest of the council members would like to join us at the storytime, we'd be happy to have you. The storytime will be followed by the San Carlos Children's Theater with an audience participation improv comedy and songs at 11:15. Also on Saturday, the San Carlos Kilwanas Club will be hosting a hot dog barbecue in front of the library at 11:00. After lunch, if you'd like to see a parrot ride a bicycle, then come watch the very acrobatic Happy Birds troupe performing at 1:00. At 2:45, we'll hope that you're hungry again, and we'll roll out our anniversary cupcakes and ice cream for all to share. We'll have three more special programs on Sunday. At 1:00, we'll be conducting a Wii Gaming Tournament for teens in the upstairs conference rooms. Downstairs at 1:30, we'll have the Baguette Quartet playing in our café lounge. They perform Parisian standards from the 1920s to the 1940s, and they'll make you actually like hearing the accordion music. We end our celebration with local folk singing favorite Jim Stevens at 3:30. The Friends of the San Carlos Library will be serving popcorn on both days, as well as staffing their bookstore. The Friends have also provided funding for all the activities this weekend. Please note that if you're a library user who likes peace and quiet in the library, we'll not be shushing anyone this weekend. We expect the library to be loud and full of activity. Council members, the packet I just passed out earlier contains announcements of all the varied entertaining and educational programs and workshops we'll be presenting in the next few months in the library. We've had a very busy and successful past ten years, and we're planning on being even busier and relevant far into the future. On that note, I would like to announce that the Friends of the San Carlos Library will shortly be joining forces with the County of San Mateo and the City of San Carlos to start fundraising for a projected renovation of the interior of the library. Fresh paint, fresh carpeting, updated furnishings and spaces for new services will help keep the San Carlos Library a vital part of the community. Thank you for your time and attention, hope to see you all this weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Malakwa. I'll be there. Do you know what I'm going to read? No, I'm sure they'll, should I practice?
I want some advanced billing.
I'm sure I'll have a good book, or books to read. The next item we have is item 5B, which is a presentation of a check from the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood for the Mobile Citizens Emergency Response Team trailer. Chief Doug Fry.
Maybe Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. At this time, I'd like to ask the current president of Greater East San Carlos, Ben Fuller, and the past president, Scott Marshers, to step up here, if possible, and just express a little bit how hard these two have worked in educating, preparing their residents and community to be disaster ready. On behalf of the Fire Department and the City of San Carlos, and of course, the CERT members, we are really appreciative and thankful for their donation of $3,000 to the City of San Carlos and the Fire Department for the purchase of an emergency response trailer and the related equipment that goes along with that. These CERT members and volunteers will be utilizing these specialized trailers to support emergency response capabilities during the time of a crisis, as well as assist the first responders out in the field. As we continue to build this program by providing CERT training to the participants, we just continue to see just an overwhelming amount of dedication to the safety of our community. At this time, we have close to 300 members that are part of the CERT teams within the two communities, and we have a large waiting list of interested citizens waiting to join. Again, we're just proud to work with these volunteers and how they enhance the community's ability to respond and recover from a crisis. This donation, as you're probably aware, will allow for a second trailer to be here within the city limits. Each of these trailers will be strategically placed within the city, and it will be stocked with equipment necessary to set up a mobile command center, triage center, emergency lights, stretcher, rescue devices and source of medical supplies. Our future goal at some point is to have a total of four trailers between the two cities, located near or housed by one of the fire stations, so that they'd be available and we can kind of keep an eye on them. So I'd like to ask Ben to say a few words about this program and what it's about for them. Ben?
Good evening, esteemed council. I'd be remiss not to mention the history by which this $3,000 came about. Scott Marshers, our president emeritus, as we call him now, previous president of L'Oreal and now GSC, he worked really hard to get 1,500 bucks. And then, in somewhat of a backhanded compliment to you guys, we got the other 1,500 bucks because of the million dollar check that Pamf gave for the soccer field, and then we said, well, how come we don't get anything? And they said, well, we'll throw in another 1,500 bucks to match the existing fund. So it's kind of, in some ways, it worked out really well for everyone. So anyway, I just want Scott to talk about the details, but Scott did all the work, he organized all the committees. Please tell us about it, Scott.
Thank you. It really came about when, in talking with residents throughout the neighborhood and looking at ways that we could prepare the neighborhood for any type of an emergency. And so what we initially did was to send around the information to every house in the community about the things that individuals could do to prepare their own homes for any type of an emergency. But then, we recognized that there was a greater need for an organization beyond just, you know, each individual doing stuff. And so for an entire year, we took the homeowners association dues and set them into an account. We got matching funds from two generous donors within the neighborhood who matched the $500 that was set aside from the association dues. And then, as Ben mentioned, Pamf matched the $1,500 that we had raised up to that point. And so it's with great pleasure that I present to Doug a check for $3,000.
That's great. Thank you. Well, on behalf, on behalf of the council and obviously all the citizens of San Carlos, we want to thank the folks in the Greater Eastside group and for their hard work over the long years, because it didn't just take five minutes to raise the 500 either, I know, and for your interest in community spirit, because that's the whole reason why we're all here, is we're all here to help each other. So please carry back the council's thanks to the group that you guys provided to the Fire Department on this item. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item 6, public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. We try to limit the comments to two minutes apiece, and I have two speaker slips, and the first speaker slip I have is Louis Boris, followed by Pat Bell. No problem. Time hasn't started yet.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman, I'm actually going to read this, because I know we have time constraints for the public comment, so. My name is Lou Boris, and our family has been in San Carlos residence here since 1959. In our 50 years here in San Carlos, we have operated two businesses in San Carlos, the Boris Garden Center for 14 years, which we had to close due to the grade separation and the athletin appliance service. I have two points that I'd like to address with the council tonight. One is to plead with Public Works and the council to put on the city's work agenda to correct the flooding problem along 1415 and 1600 blocks of Alcamino Real. And these items to be placed on future agendas, so more comprehensive attention and reports can be made. We have owned the property at the corner of 1600 Alcamino since 1969, and it has flooded many, many times, causing considerable expense in cleanup, structural and wall damage, mold problems and loss of rents and tenants. Our building has been vacant for almost a year after our latest tenant vacated and our last repairs were completed. Possible new tenants must be told of the flooding problem and are not willing to sign leases without drastic reduction in rents and assurance that they'll be reimbursed for damages and losses of income. I'm aware that the city does not have money at this time, but they have had money over the past 40 years that we've owned this building. And I've made many, many, many requests. We've flooded, I know you guys know that this isn't just a new problem, it's been going on for umpteen years. So I'd just like to have some consideration to have this put on the agenda at some time when we have some money, so that we can get this problem resolved. My second point is to address the council and the planning about being sensitive to a buffer zone between multi-dwelling and residential. We live in a cul-de-sac at the end of Carmelita Drive, with the creek separating our home and Prospect Avenue, which is off of San Carlos Avenue. There are two properties at the dead end of Prospect that can be developed into three-story condos. Now, we had, a couple of years back, we had the one that was second from the end that was developed, or brought up before the council, and we had meetings, and there were about three meetings, and there was a lot of people from Prospect and from Carmelita that addressed the city council, and I guess the comment that we got was that the developer had already spent money on the application and for the planning and for the architect, and that we were just a little bit too late in bringing this to the attention. So what I'm trying to do now is to bring it to attention before these last two parcels are brought up, so that we can possibly take consideration of what I'm going to propose. We live at the cul-de-sac at the end of Carmelita Drive, with the creek separating us, as I say. And what I'd like to urge is that the parcels be developed with no more than, say, two stories, one, rather than three-story height limit, which they have all down the street, with two stories, one underground and one above, or, I mean, one underground parking and two above, or parking with one above. We'd have set a precedent, I mean, in regards to the, one of the things here about 25, 30 years ago, when the San Carlos Medical Center was built, and we had meetings in the city council in regards to having a height limit there, which was one story backing up against a creek with the houses against Carmelita Drive. So we have gone through this once, and I'm pleading that we hopefully are sensitive to this thing right next to our properties. My plea is not only for me and my neighbors, but also for anyone that finds himself in the same position that we're in. I guess if your home were located in a parcel such as mine, you would be sensitive like I am, so I just ask you, please, not in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Boris, very much. Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. First, I agree with Matt, if our sister city or cities are participating in torturing people or abusing people because of their beliefs, I want to know about it, and I want to talk about whether we want to be sister city to a place like that. Maybe our sister cities aren't involved, fine, but I'd like to know. And on the subject of water, I would be happy to pay high prices for water if they would take the poison out of it and use ultraviolet treatment to get rid of the germs. As it is now, our water cannot be dumped into the bay. If you dump too much of it into the bay, you get fined, because it kills fish. The time is coming, and it's not far off, when you will not be allowed to wash your car in your driveway, because the water goes in the gutter, and then it goes to the bay, and then it kills the fish. So I know this, unfortunately, there have been people who have been screaming all kinds of crazy things about chloramine and what it does to the body and so forth. I don't know whether it does all those terrible things to people or not, but it does kill the marine life in the bay, and it'll kill trout and salmon. We're not talking little tiny organisms. It's potent stuff. So we need to get that out of our water, and I would be happy to pay increased rates to get it out of our water. I was told by the head of the lab for the San Francisco Water Department, where we buy our water, that the reason they did it that way is it was the cheapest way to meet the federal requirements. Well, cheapest isn't always best. And when Palo Alto studied this, they found that UV wasn't as outrageously expensive as it's cracked up to be, because when you take into account the fact that you have to buy all those poisonous chemicals and truck them in to put them in your water, you have to include that cost when you're looking at the cost of water purification. And the recycled water, they put even more chemicals into it because of the ick factor. People don't want to drink sewage. So we've got to do something about that, and if they're going to up the prices, I think that's the time to do it. Say, sure, I'll pay more, but I want the water to be safe for the bay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Anyone else listening to speak in public comment tonight? Okay. Moving on, item 7, consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff or public, request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Okay. Hearing nothing from other council members to pull anything, I would move approval of item 7A through F.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve consent calendar, items 7A through F. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And we have four items on the agenda, items 8A, B, C and D. Mr. Royce, did you have any comments or other reports on that?
Mr. Mayor, as you noted, these are just for information. The first is from the fire chief, the other three are from the public works director, and if you have questions, we'd be happy to address them, those staff members are in the audience. Otherwise, in that there's no action required, they're submitted just for your information.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on item 8A? Okay, we can come back if you think of one. I'm not going to cut you off here. Item 8B?
Actually, I did, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I may have a comment on that.
Okay, fine. Mr. Wild, I guess you have to stand at the podium, because we have some questions. Thank you so much. Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Wild, the way, what I took out of the report was essentially this, that we've got a lot of inventory, asset management is a difficult task. We have implemented something called Land Logic, which is now being, which has been purchased and implemented. Do you have a cost on this? And I guess I was also looking here, you did mention in the report, open source systems. What is the status of that? Where can we start to look for movement in that direction?
Land Logic is actually Doug Long's area, Parks and Rec Director. I'll cover the second question.
Mr. Long, you're up. I think we're running out of department heads. You don't know anything about this, do you, Jeff?
Right, yeah. Honestly, I can't remember what the purchase Honestly, I can't remember what the purchase price was on that. I think it was purchased—or set aside before I got here. So it's a standalone software that we recently uploaded on that, and honestly, I can't remember the price tag.
Okay.
I could have said that. Thanks, Doug.
Well, on the open source software, so that comes into the GIS or Geographic Information System is where we're looking at that. And currently, we use—we have purchased licenses to a program called ARC GIS, which is from a company called Esri. And we pay a certain amount to renew those licenses. We've hired a consultant to look at options because our licenses are costly, and the data is out of date, and actually—well, the data's okay, but the applications are out of date. And we were in the midst of an upgrade to a newer version of this ARC GIS when the staff member that was doing that left the city, and we haven't ever completed that transition. So we had hired a consultant to help us look at where we are, where we should go, and they recommended that we consider an open source application called Map Server, which comes at no cost. And we would have to put the time in to build the application, an internal website, I think, for our use, to retrieve information from our databases. But currently, I've got a proposal from a consultant to do that. We're evaluating that proposal. The proposal's in the amount of $25,000 to build that internal website to read our own data. So that wouldn't necessarily come back to council. It's a level that could be funded by staff.
Mr. Mayor, my point in doing these questions was—actually, to do—a—this is more of a strategic question. Licenses cost money. Maintenance costs money. Software needs to be upgraded, et cetera. There is a significant push in the corporate world toward open source software at the council level, and I would also look sideways at staff to say, it would be interesting to talk about a strategy for where are opportunities for open source software within city government? How can we start to move towards those platforms?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ahmad. Mr. Royce, did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, just first one. All three of your reports are excellent. I learned a lot. Appreciate—in fact, the fire report, as Doug goes out the door, is also very good. The only question I had would be—I know asset management, this is to inventory our assets for maintenance and management and location, and when we have $125 million of assets, that's really important. Have the consultants talked about—to me, that one offsetting layer may be kind of more the financial. I know in kind of a corporate finance, the whole key of managing a company is kind of what your return on your assets is. A lot of companies do what's called economic value added, where you really look at all your assets. In our situation, it doesn't make sense. Traffic lights and parks—it's—we're providing services, but there are some buildings and some assets that may have some impact on costing for our rates or just overall what our return is, you know, knowing what the value is and are we getting adequate financial return. So my question is—and if you say no, that's fine, but I was just wondering, does this go that two steps further? Are there any plans to—that could help in any of our financial analysis and planning for the city in this tool?
Not that I know of.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
All right. I hadn't gone that far.
Good. Okay.
So—I'm sorry, again? Sure.
Yeah, I thought we were going B then.
Yeah, yeah. Are we finished with B? Okay, moving on to C. Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Wild, I've got four questions. Let me just hit you at once. You have listed in the report DOE funding available. The question there was, have we identified any projects eligible for DOE? You have mentioned an Energy Watch staff is exploring lighting options, retrofits. I was curious who's on that Energy Watch staff, and are there any projects listed right now? You mentioned AB-1546. You mentioned where the money comes from, but you said it could be used to establish a pilot program for congestion management activities to reduce traffic congestion. Do we have any of those programs or any in place? Lastly, there was a point about the watershed management plan. It looks like it's concurrent with the general plan. I just wanted to verify that, and then I'll have one comment at the end.
The first two questions are actually—Assistant City Manager Mora is the best one to answer those.
On the DOE money, there's two types of energy grants. The first is the so-called small cities and counties money. We had submitted comments to the state about a month ago suggesting that the small cities probably make more sense in that program, given the size of the cities, to award that money on a per capita basis rather than grant writing required. The state is agreed with us, and so San Carlos now stands to get somewhere in the neighborhood of $140,000 to $150,000 later this year. So we are tracking that closely. My understanding in talking to the county and also the state officials is, at this point, they would like us to focus our attention on that money to energy efficiency, primarily in city buildings, which—as we've been talking with both—I've been talking to Doug and Robert, that's exactly what we were planning to do. I still don't have clarity, though, on one of the regulations in the per capita money regarding—they would like to specify what equipment we actually use in the building, so I'm waiting to get some more information on that. There is a second set of money, which is competitive, which comes out of the states—I believe it's $600 million—from the Recovery Act, and that, again, is aimed at energy efficiency projects. That will be competitive, and the rules for that come out in the next couple of months, and that's about all we know on that, although, again, it would be our intent to compete for those funds because one of the strategies at the staff level we have out of this program is to spend some of this money to make our buildings more energy efficient and to bring down the general fund O and M costs.
And the Energy Watch staff?
Oh, excuse me, the Energy Watch staff. Up until this year, the Association of Area Governments, ABAG, worked with PG&E on a program called Bay Area Energy Watch. This is funded out of the so-called public goods funds that are part of everyone's PG&E bill. That program sunsetted last year, and this year, the program has now been spun out, so it's done on a county-by-county basis. CCAG and the county have teamed up with the Recycle Works Group at the county to come up with what we're now calling the San Mateo County Energy Watch, or SMC Energy Watch for short. In the first year, this year, they are picking up where—excuse me—the ABAG program left off. They are focusing in a couple areas. One is municipal buildings, and since we had a number of audits done by ABAG as they were sunsetting, this group is now working with Doug and Robert to review our buildings. They've actually looked at the courtyard, and they have some ideas about adding induction lighting to reduce our energy costs. They are supposed to come out in the next couple of weeks and finish our buildings, as I understand it. And then the other program that they're using—and we've already briefed the Chamber of Commerce and their Green Committee—is there is a program now to help small businesses in San Carlos and in the other twenty cities in the county. And any business can call an 888 number, an 800 number, if you will, to get some assistance with energy efficiency grants. We actually ran a story about that in a recent council newsletter and also in our recent Green E-newsletter that was sent out. So we are encouraging small businesses to do that. Next year, Energy Watch will expand. They will get additional money from PG&E and the Public Utilities Commission, and at that point, they will also offer energy efficiency programs for low and moderate-income households in the county. And that's something also we will be tracking as soon as it comes online. But for now, their main focus is to work with municipalities and county buildings as well as small business, and we're engaged in both of those programs.
AB-1546 is $46,000 a year, and it's—so it comes out of the special legislation that allows $4 vehicle license fee in San Mateo County to apply—be applied to local programs. By that legislation, half of it has to be used for congestion management purposes and half for clean stormwater. And it could be used either capital or operating. In the past, we've mainly used it for operating funds. I listed it here because it could be used for capital. And it could—in this case, it—we have a project in this year's adopted CIP budget which would actually go toward what Mr. Boris was saying earlier, a very small effort toward what he was saying earlier. But the—it would look at the possibility of actually trying to get stormwater back into the ground instead of running off on the streets. And it's a green streets program, and San Mateo County's been a real leader in this program. And so we're proposing to—we have in the budget to use this year's stormwater money to look at the feasibility of what's called a curb extension, which captures stormwater and allows it to infiltrate rather than running off. And it's—each of these costs about $40,000 just for one, one each. So this $22,000 really is getting us towards doing the preliminary engineering work, soils reports and so on. But was that what your question was on?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Okay. Then on the second part, the falls under the more general topic of clean stormwater There isn't a lot out there right now, but there could be more. And just today, I was in a meeting where there's a possibility of getting some grant assistance, which I'll be bringing back to the council in September, to deal with PCB issues in San Carlos. San Carlos is one of the hotspots for PCBs in the Bay Area. And with the new permit coming down from the regional board, we're kind of in the gun site. The mayor actually spoke at the board hearing on PCBs and asking them to give some regulatory relief on that, which they apparently are considering, Mayor. So these are—there's nothing—there's not really anything we do right now to become better positioned just to keep our eyes out for any opportunities that are out there and look for them when they come, and stay involved in all the committees that are involved in this.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on HC, Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Mayor, the comment that I had—I know what we put in the strategic plan and what was directed of staff, and what I expected are slightly different. So I'll tell you what I would have loved. I would have—I thought I was going to get a list of, here are the sixteen things that we think are most eligible, and that's what we're going for. That was my expectation. This is a great report, but that was my expectation. The other thing that I would like to put out as part of my wish list, if there's an opportunity to build guidelines or some sort of structure whereby volunteer groups or other commissions within San Carlos can partner with the city for grants, I think that would also be of high interest and would love to start to see if public-private partnerships could occur in that respect.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on HC? Mr. Grocott?
Just a couple of items. One, I would point out that on the clean stormwater grants—I know this is an issue that we've been wrestling with for a long time. It picked my interest when the gentleman talked about his issues at the area of El Camino that he talked about. And I do remember raising that issue a few years back, and we were told at the time that there were some changes coming down from the state that made it difficult to do, you know, a citywide stormwater drain—you know, come up with a drainage plan that addresses our whole city. And actually, sometimes when you do those, they touch on other municipalities because obviously, like for us, some of that drainage starts in the county, you know, up in the hills. I don't know where that stands today, but I was interested in what you said here about San Frans—the San Frans Guido Creek. Am I saying that properly? And I would just note that, you know, the consultant on that is actually a resident of San Carlos, Len Maderman, is working on that project. And anything we could leverage from one of our own residents, I think, would be very useful if we could do that. The other thing that I wanted to—that I just wanted to comment on is our—we applied for Safe Routes to Schools for that grant program and got denied, but we—I suppose we could still do that project or apply through the TDA program because even though it's Safe Routes to School, it's a similar type of program. TDA is not specifically for Safe Routes to School, but it does deal with bicycle and pedestrian safety issues. And I would note that something that Half Moon Bay—the city of Half Moon Bay did, and we took note of at BPAC, was they came up with a whole plan out there on the coast for this, you know, bicycle pedestrian path, and then they broke it up into segments and submitted it every year, segment at a time. And they have been funded year after year because they did that, because they took something that was millions of dollars and broke it up into thousands of dollars that we felt good as a committee to fund. And so I just throw that out there as a strategy that works, and I would encourage our city to do that, too, year after year, go after the same thing with some kind of overall plan that's broken up.
San Carlos has actually been quite effective in funding its bicycle facilities that way. In 2003, a bicycle transportation plan was adopted, and just about everything on that bicycle transportation plan has now been complete through that same Transportation Development Act, TDA program.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on HC? Okay, moving on, eight D. Mr. Royce, any comments or questions on eight D?
Let's see here. Nothing.
Okay, Mr. Ahmad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wild? The—this report, for folks who don't have it in front of them, is about developing a transit plan to improve public transportation in San Carlos. Looking at your next steps, the lead sentence is, "Local transit planning should focus on improving employer shuttle programs." I want to—I want to push on that and challenge it a little bit. It strikes me that one of the things that I would like to explore is how do we get people to downtown? When Scoot was alive, and we do discuss this significantly in the report, it tended to work with the youth going to school and to other areas, and we do want to get folks into our shopping districts. So the employer shuttles—because I also sit on the Congestion Traffic Relief Alliance, which funds some of those shuttles—I'd like to push this a little bit. So my request is to consider if our Transportation Commission may want to take a look at this. I'd be curious—because those are areas, I think, that are hot—if we can start to develop some sort of ability to get people into downtown, get people to the youth center. That strikes me as interesting and something that ought to be done. I would be curious to see if there are any public-private partnerships that could be available, or maybe could—the coalition be twisted in some way.
I took that off the table for financial feasibility reasons. But, you know, it's certainly a policy decision. I'm just an engineer.
Appreciate it. So am I. God bless you.
Maybe you guys should talk longer, you know, because you're both engineers.
We'll keep it away from the dais.
Oh, okay. Anything else on eight D? Okay. I'm sorry, sure, Mr. Royce.
Maybe. Maybe this may have value. Things like the Transit Village, which is totally a proposal. There's nothing approved yet on this thing at all, not even where signal lights will be or where parking's going to be for the whole thing or where shuttle pickups will be. But I do think we need to—as we go through our planning and things like transit, when I—I really think shuttles is going to be a key success for the city of San Carlos for our employee base on the east side. I mean, that's where we have a lot of employees that take buses and trains, and we need to get them to and from work, including Palo Alto Medical. And utilizing the best, efficient, friendly way of using both sides of the depot—I want to—you know, now we're only using one side. That's not good. Using both sides makes a lot of sense, but because there are so many unknowns yet with transit, I just want to make sure we keep an open mind and make—you know, and concentrate on—I think the success of the shuttle, a big piece of it will be where the pickup points are. And we don't have it. As I just say, it's not identified, but shuttles are going to be great, and make sure we do the best thinking we can with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item nine. We have a number of public hearings listed here. Nine A is consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 10.32.225, restricted parking, employee parking program, and authorizing charging a fee for employee parking permits. Mr. Wild, you're still here.
Yeah, it's my night. This—you've already actually approved the fee. You did that on May 26th when the fee study came to you. And—but approval of that fee was contingent on amending the ordinance because the ordinance currently says that no fee will be charged. So this agenda item would take care of that. So, this, this agenda item would take care of that. To review, there's ninety-four spaces in the four city-owned parking lots which are designated for permit parking. And this fee was proposed because there is no budget to maintain even painted markings for the spaces. I had a request to refresh the paint that says permit parking only. I looked at my budget, I don't have anything in my budget to do that. So, this would raise the revenue at least to fund that, that activity. And, and so, it's a, it's a fairly modest fee, the twenty-four dollars is much less than the other cities' charge.
Okay.
And with that, I conclude the report and see if there's any questions.
Any questions? We did discuss this once before, but does the council have any questions? No, I understand. Okay, there's the public hearing, so if anyone wants you to speak on this item, Pat Bell?
A couple of things, Pat Bell, San Carlos, come to mind about this. First, the city staff has been squeezed and squeezed and squeezed, and even if it's only two dollars a month, I'm not sure we should be charging them to park so they can work as hard as they work.
It's not going to be for, it's not going to be for the city, Pat, it's going to be for employees of businesses. It's not for the city.
Oh, well, that's fine then.
Okay.
You can charge them.
Thank you.
But the other part of it is that if, if you charge them to park in the lot and they don't want to pay that, they're going to park in the neighborhood, on neighborhood streets, and then you're going to hear from the neighbors.
Well, there are two-hour limits on some of the neighbors. I don't think they would be wanting to park in some of the neighbors. So, anyway.
Well, on the east side, south of Holly, that neighborhood has historically had a terrible problem with people parking on their neighborhood streets and they've complained and complained and complained. And I can foresee that being a problem in other areas of the city. If you charge people to park in a lot, then are they going to go try to find street parking?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public on this item? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this.
Move to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close a public hearing on item nine A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. So, do you have a motion for this item?
I'd like to make a motion. I did have one question, Mr. Mayor, but.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Wild, I was just curious, in the report, it mentioned that there was an unlimited number of permits that had been issued by the Chamber of Commerce, or that was their ability. Do we know how many permits have been done? The second part of this question, the Samtrans parking lot, which is behind the old Eureka Bank, that is available for public parking. I was curious if there has been any push for at least downtown employees to park in that lot.
First question, they issued only an order of two to three hundred permits per, per six-month period. So, this will definitely cut back on the, we're not going to issue that many because we don't want to charge somebody for a permit if they have no reasonable ability to get a parking space. I was actually planning to, on a trial basis, sell a hundred and forty-some permits, a hundred and fifty percent of what we have spaces, assuming that works out. Now, actually, I'd like to defer to the city clerk. She's, her husband works for Samtrans. I don't think that that parking is available to the public in any.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, Christine Bowlen, city clerk. At one point, the Samtrans was allowing public parking on the fourth level of their parking structure. I don't know if that's true to this day, but naturally, I see merchants parking there anyway, so.
Well, we can look into that and see if it's, you know, whether it is or isn't, we can just, that's a pretty easy phone call and we can find out about that. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, move for the introduction of ordinance number?
Fourteen oh nine.
Uh, ordinance dealing with code section one zero point three two point two two five, restricted parking and the employee parking program.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the introducing of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item nine B. Consideration of adopting a resolution adopting the traffic impact fees for fiscal two thousand nine, two thousand and ten based on an estimated cost of one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars per peak hour trip to implement the needed capital program. Mr. Wild.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item is part of a, the task of managing the traffic impact fee program. It's just something you really need to stay on top of each year. Some cities don't do that and they fall behind and then they can't complete the program that they're collecting the money for, or they have to subsidize it. So, that's not a situation we want San Carlos to get in. The general plan finds that these three projects are needed to mitigate the effects of future growth. Britton Avenue widening and Industrial Road, Holly Street 101 interchange modifications, and the Holly Street widening just at Industrial Road. And the total cost of all three projects was estimated at four point six million dollars a year ago, and now, I went back through those estimates, this is my first chance to look at those estimates, and I peg it at five point two million dollars, which is an increase of eight point nine percent. And so, the fee needs to be increased to reflect this increase in costs. San Carlos' fee is low among neighboring cities. Even at the higher level, it's less than half of those fees charged by Palo Alto and by San Mateo. The Britton Avenue project is, is moving forward. We're designing that in preliminary design. That'll go to the TNC Commission next month and then bring it back to preliminary design to council in, in the fall, for you to take a look at. That's a pretty straightforward project. The other two, the Holly Street projects, as you know, are, are part of the Alternatives Analysis. Councilmember Ahmad mentioned the, the workshop last week, which was very well-attended, very spirited, and I do appreciate all the participation. We, we came up with some wild, out-of-the-box ideas and most of those ideas didn't work too well. We're going to, we're going to look at that, definitely to keep the public comment in mind, and we'll keep working on ideas till we get something that, that works well. And that, the, again, that'll be coming back to the council, but after some time, the TNC Commission will be looking at this project for their next three meetings and then it'll come to the council probably in November. There's also a walking tour, if you're interested, of the east side on August 11th at 5:00 P.M. TNC Commission will be walking and seeing where the walkability and bicycling issues are on the east side, August 11th at 5:00 P.M.
Okay.
So, that's just a side note to the main topic, which is the traffic impact fee program, and be glad to answer any questions that there may be.
Questions for Mr. Wild on this? Mr. Grocott?
Um, just, you noted about the fee relative to other cities. The fees, however, are, they, they need to be justified by projects as you've done and that's how they are set, regardless of, I mean, you, you can't move them up or down based on, you know, looking at neighbors and so forth.
Right. It's not really, we look at them in terms of how they place us in the market, but the fees are driven by the costs of mitigations. It's not really market-driven, it's based on mitigation programs.
What the projects are. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I make a.
Move to close public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number two thousand nine dash.
Sorry? Um, fifty-eight.
Resolution to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, establishing the traffic impact mitigation fees for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand and ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution nine B. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item nine C. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving stormwater national pollutant discharge elimination system, NPDES charges for the fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. Mr. Wild?
Thank you. Thank you. Well, this is an annual, another annual task, and this isn't about setting a new rate, this is just approving to place the charges on the tax roll. The rate for stormwater was set in nineteen ninety-four and hasn't been raised since that time. And this isn't proposing to change that. This is, we calculated and applied those rates to all the, the current tax roll or assessed, the current assessed properties in, in San Carlos, and this will just allow it to be put on the taxes next year.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Wild? This is a public hearing, is anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Pat Bell?
As most, probably all of you know, I'm embarrassed that the city of San Carlos asked that these regulations be loosened because it's too expensive to put cleaner water into the bay and we should let the poisonous water go into the bay. Why hasn't the rate been raised since nineteen ninety-four? We know a lot more about the dangers of these pollutants now and the fact that we're a hotspot for PCBs, which we probably didn't know in nineteen ninety-four. I would be a lot happier if our council were pushing to up the rates and do a better job than going to the hearing and trying to get the regulations loosened to fit a nineteen ninety-four rate. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Move to close public hearing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move for adopting a resolution number two thousand nine dash.
Fifty-nine.
Resolution to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, Stormwater Charges, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand and ten in accordance with chapter one three point one six of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item nine C. Any other comments, questions? Not, Ms. Bowlen?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Moving on, item nine D. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving wastewater charges for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. Mr. Wild, why don't you speak?
You're going to get tired of me.
No. Omar won't because you're an engineer.
It's all about the love.
All right. Same deal. This is just, this isn't setting a, a new rate, but just placing it on the tax roll. I, I would say that we will need to look at the wastewater rates. As you, you've heard about the wastewater capital program that SBSA has been working on, that's, that's a very active cap program and much needed. Dan Child, the executive director of, the manager, excuse me, the general manager of SBSA is going to be tentatively on your agenda in September to give you a briefing on, on their program, what's going on with that. In October, you'll be hearing about, hearing from a consultant that's looking at our wastewater collection system and how we operate and maintain that. He's in the midst of doing an assessment of our practices versus what industry standard practices are, looking for efficiencies, ways to improve. And I've seen a little bit of his, of his, his work. He has a very robust model of, of how other agencies do maintenance functions. And he's plugged all of our activities into that model, so I think it'll be very revealing about what it really takes to operate and maintain the sewer collection system properly. So, without, that's an aside, but there's, I see no reason not to approve these charges. We've, we've gone through these quite thoroughly this year and, and these are ready to place on the tax roll.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Wild?
Uh, no. Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do though, however, this does concern SBSA, so I would like to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Wild? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, hearing none.
I move to close public.
Comment? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Item D, can I have a motion?
I would move approval of resolution number two thousand nine sixty.
Does he have to read it?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Councilmember Ramon is recused and was left the room. Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ramon, you may return. And moving on to new business, item ten A, Discussion of Proposed Household Waste Disposal Program from South Bayside Waste Management Authority, the SBWMA. Ms. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Brian Mora, Assistant City Manager. Item ten A is something that I know the council has expressed interest in on a number of occasions, both during your strategic plan retreats and also during some of our prior discussions about solid waste services. This is a program that proposes to provide door-to-door collection of household waste, household hazardous waste, universal waste, e-scrap and sharps. It's an interesting program because unlike most of the solid waste and recycling programs you have, when this was placed out to bid, the large carriers that you're normally familiar with do not provide this service. Rather, it is more typically provided by smaller custom companies, kind of the boutique carriers, if you will. This particular RFP went out on behalf of all twelve agencies in the SBWMA. Two RFP responses were received, and during the selection process, one of those two firms did drop out, leaving SBWMA with Curbside Inc., which is the recommended vendor for this service. As the staff report notes, it goes into some detail about the items that would be available for collection if the council moved ahead with this program. And again, it covers many of the areas that councils asked about in the past, such as paints, oils, electrical equipment, et cetera. It is a, and a different price model than what you're used to in that it is a prepaid service by all subscribers. If it were to be adopted, each single-family customer would pay forty-five cents a month in advance for this service. If we extended it to multifamily, which some agencies are interested in, others are not, that charge would be thirty-five cents per month. In the SBWMA, nine of the twelve agencies have expressed interest in this program, and we expect that as we get closer to the discussion about elements of next year's rates, there will be some agencies looking closer at this. In fact, after the preparation of this staff report, I actually had another agency request a copy of it so they could sort of borrow some of the ideas in, in our staff report. I think from the staff perspective, we would suggest that if the council is interested in this program, that since we've already adjusted the rates twice this year, that we would not implement it this year, but rather, we would start it early next year. From the staff perspective, we think it's attractively priced, it's roughly a two percent rate impact. However, since it is literally a door-to-door custom service, it seems rather reasonable for the price that is proposed. The way it would work is that the vendor would provide the appropriate packaging material. So, if you had, for example, a compact fluorescent bulb, they would send you a box to put the bulb in, and once you packaged it, you could contact them for pickup and they would pick it up on a custom basis. So, that's the outline of the program. Be interested in any questions or comments the council may have. Again, this is up tonight for discussion and direction to staff as we get closer to beginning to work on next year's rate. I should also mention that Cliff Feldman from SBWMA is also here, and Cliff can help us with some of the more technical aspects of the program.
Any questions for Mr. Mora?
I do. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I, I love what this is going to try to do, so I'm very excited. I am curious about the liability. We're going to be picking up hazardous materials. I would like to, obviously, we're contracting with a reputable group, would like some, some assurance of the liability that we're not going to find this dumped someplace in Mud Suck, Nebraska in an open pit somewhere. I would like some assurances there. Second of all, I was just curious regarding the, the disposal of computers, is there any additional security that's being put around that e-waste? I noticed that hard drives were not specifically put in there, but I think people are going to throw it, throw it in there. And overall, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm excited that this, it deals with mercury, it deals with the compact fluorescent lights, it deals with batteries, it deals with medical waste, which is really fairly interesting in terms of dealing with sharps. This is, this is a tremendous service.
Yeah. I just add on the e-waste that, as I understand it, this company subcontracts with e-cycling, which is one of the companies that we use for our e-waste events from time to time. And on the liability question, maybe I'll ask Mr. Feldman to come up and comment on the details of the proposed contract.
Hi, Cliff Feldman, Recycling Programs Manager with SBWMA. And the two questions you asked, one was related to the liability for the overall program. The contract will be pretty extensive in insurance and liability requirements. And basically, when the company goes door-to-door, they assume the liability for the products they're picking up. And they send out a packaging, a kit in advance, residents comply. If it's not, they're not complied with, they'll walk away from it. The resident will have time to repackage it and get it ready to go. Or they take it with them, and the resident is held harmless at that point. So the contract will be very tight, and your attorney will review it. We're putting together kind of a model contract, should have that done in about a month or so, and then hand it off to member agencies to revise as they see fit. On the e-waste, we require them to disclose all their downstream vendors, and we do require all vendors for all materials to be located within North America. So we're making sure nothing is not handled domestically or in Canada. And that's very important to us.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Questions, other questions? Ms. Grokot?
I had two questions. I need something to be a definition of what sharps are. I take it Mr. Ahmad knows what they are, so.
Yeah, sharps, an example would be somebody who was, say, a diabetic or others who had injected.
Needles.
Needles, exactly. Typically, what happens is they will give you at the, say, Kaiser, a kit to clip off the needle portion and put it into a box. And I don't know, is this similar, this vendor would have something similar as far as packaging. And again, this would be something where I think the advantage to this door-to-door service is rather than having the individual having to collect the sharps and kind of drive down to Shoreway, in this case, the company would literally come to your front door and pick it up.
So how would this either supplement or replace the events that we do now, the e-waste and so forth? And how would that affect?
I guess, I hear your question, Councilmember Grokot. In other words, if we have door-to-door service, would the vendors want to still have e-waste events? Maybe Mr. Feldman might want to.
Because that's in our current, we haven't formalized our contract, but it seems to me that was part of the discussion last time you presented.
That's correct. What we said to the council last time was that right now, what we're doing with e-waste is we are working with events with companies like ASL and like e-cycling who do these periodic events once or twice a year at a convenient point for people to drive up. And of course, in addition to that, one can always bring these items to the recyclery on Shoreway. I guess the question that you're proposing, Councilmember Grokot, is if people can bring their e-waste to Shoreway and they have door-to-door pickup, is there still gonna be enough material left for the periodic special events? I don't know if you have a thought about that.
Yeah, well, even irrespective of those other options, what we found is in the last couple of years, the numbers going to the events have dwindled. So we're proposing, starting with this year, to maybe just cut back the two events to one event because we're really not getting that much participation at the individual events. What the program before you now is, is really stepping up the convenience so people can call up once, twice, three, how many times they want every year to have this stuff collected. So it's really just another level of service. The events that we do, the only costs we incur are to advertise them. There's no other events for staging the event or staffing it.
Okay. And then I heard your answer, but I just wanna ask it again because I just wanna make sure I'm hearing it correct. Mr. Ahmad referred to this. You know, we hear about e-waste and hazardous materials being collected, and then in some cases put on a barge and sent overseas to poorer countries that, you know, for whatever reason, there they have it. And that doesn't seem fair. And I think as a city, we wanna make sure that our material doesn't end up in that kind of situation.
Well, the contracts we have with the firms currently, because the events that Brian and your staff promote operate through contracts that we have with these companies, that we provide them to disclose a very tight list of all their downstream vendors and to let us know within 30 days if they change any of the vendors. And the companies that we've selected, that was one of the primary pieces of criteria for us to select them, was to make sure that they have reputable vendors, they've been using them, and have good relationships, and that they're not gonna change. So we make sure that everything is accounted for domestically or in Canada.
It's accounted for domestically or in Canada?
Correct. So nothing is, like in that, there was a recent frontline program, and before that, Silicon Valley Toxics Coalition had a video that was released, and whether it's going to Shana or Ghana or these other countries, it is a tremendous problem, but it's something that can be addressed with some due diligence locally if you're ensuring stuff is handled within the markets. So they may not, it might not go to the cheapest outlet, which would be some of these overseas places. It might be, they might not make as much money, but it is handled domestically, or there is capacity to do that.
And not to, you know, stand the issue for too long, but can you just give us an example of, say, in the case of mercury with light bulbs and so forth? What happens to this material?
A lot of the fluorescent tubes is actually a company in Hayward that crushes those tubes. There's a handful of them, and I think that's the closest one, and they can actually recover the mercury in the machine they have. It's roughly half a million dollar machine. And whether it's a complex fluorescent tube or one of the elongated bulbs, goes through the machine, the mercury is extracted, and the glass is recycled, the metal is recycled. Other places might not have that capacity, and they could just put those into a regular Class II landfill with regular solid waste, for example.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, Brian, one question. I know we have alternative drop-off points for like pills and meds and so forth. I don't see that on the listing. Should we, can we include that or what's going on there?
I don't believe that was within the scope of work. Are you familiar with that program? Cliff, the program that the county has as far as letting people dump off dated prescription drugs, whether this would be part of that?
Yeah, this, the program with Curbside Inc. will, I think they call it controlled substances, right, like pills? As long as they're not in the original container and they're provided in the bag or the kit that the company provides, they'll collect all controlled substances.
Okay, great, super. Thank you.
I had just a couple of questions. It says here that it's, they project a 5% participation rate, and that's how they project the 45 cents a month.
Right.
So if it's a 3% participation rate, that 45 cents is gonna change.
Well, I think if the rate is significantly higher or lower, the rate will change. And obviously, part of what we're envisioning, as it says in the staff report, is doing some significant marketing and outreach to make sure people are aware of the program and that they use it.
And again, I know we're not talking about millions of dollars here. I guess it works out to be $5.40 a year for everybody in a house, I guess, to pay. And then I guess that would be on their garbage bill?
Correct.
Okay. But there's no, it's like day-to-day or month-to-month or, you know, year-to-year? I mean, it's not like a contract for 10 years, this is the fixed fee. It could go up next week, and where's?
Well, it is, I suppose, like any other rate that we would review annually.
Annually? So you're anticipating an annual review?
Right. And I guess the other comment, or the other question that I'd have for the council is your thoughts about whether it makes sense to initially do this for single-family residents only, or whether you'd be interested in rolling out to multifamily as well. Some of the cities that have looked at this are looking at staging it. I don't think staff has a strong opinion either way on that aspect of the program.
So, and to jump to the multifamily for a minute, you say 35 cents a home. I have a, I don't have it, but let's say an individual has a 10-unit apartment building.
Right.
So we're talking about 35, $3.50 a month?
Correct.
That individual would pay, so be 30, anyway, so do the math, whatever it is, $36, $40 a year that they would pay approximately.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, I certainly think that this is a great idea. I just don't know, again, I don't have a lot of, I could call them once and all my hazardous waste would disappear, one time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, gone. Because I don't generate a lot, maybe some light bulbs, I guess I could generate personally. Not a lot, I'm not gonna go through nine computers a week or a month or a year, so that's not gonna come. I mean, I realize it's very nominal dollars. They obviously make money on the volume. You know, it projected out to 45 cents, was there 6,000 homes in this, in San Carlos?
I believe it's 8,300, if I remember the number correctly.
Okay, so 8,000 homes, and I mean, it's just, I don't know. It's, I certainly don't think we should start it before next year if we do it.
Right.
And I don't know, I'm just, I'm always worried about this, a nickel here, a nickel there, and all of a sudden, we're talking real money because, and then, well, we got the program and it's $5, but next year it's gonna be 10 because we only have 3% of the people that have done it. And then everybody's done such a great job, they're willing to have 1% the next year. And then all of a sudden, it's gonna go up to $8 or $10 or $20. So I just throw that out because once you commit the stuff, you're in it. And I assume it's a year-to-year contract then?
I believe it is. Is that correct?
Well, it's, there's just a, just a couple of clarification of the compensation. We're still working with the company. We haven't decided whether it's gonna be one, three, or five years. Ultimately, you will decide. We're looking to get together cost packages from the company to get to that point. But the interesting thing is, on the risk, the fewer people participate, the less their costs are. So in theory, if it's not really a well-received service, their costs are gonna go down because they're not gonna have as much equipment use. They're gonna have vehicles and people that are idle. If you have a lot of participation, then they're gonna look for more money down the road. So our idea is to probably lock it in, and I'll just say arbitrarily now, for three years, so that way there's no surprises. We get the program, we figure out where we're at after two years, and if we need to adjust it for the fourth year or so, we do it at that time. That's kind of one approach.
Are we gonna be able to get information from them on how many people do use this?
Oh, sure, we'll have monthly reports. We'll have.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's sort of private. I mean, they're gonna tell us what they're, in effect, what they're making.
No, they're gonna tell us exactly how many people are participating, who they are, and exactly what they put out on a house-by-house basis. We'll have all that information.
Okay, I just asked that because, I mean, obviously, that's how they, I mean, to me, this is a volume deal. They're gonna make money on the volume. Because guarantee you, of 8,300 houses, I mean, like I said, I don't know whether I'm the average, or maybe I'm not, but I just can't, I mean, one time or maybe even twice a year, if tops, but that's the only time I'm gonna be calling them because I just don't have a lot of this generation of stuff. Now, other people may have a lot of it going through. I just wanna make sure the council's aware of, you know, all the different dollars and cents of it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say to the mayor's comments, I think like Councilmember Ahmad, I can envision myself using this a lot, so they probably lose money on me, but it's gonna vary.
Well, that's just it. There's obviously, I don't say that I am the norm. I'm just saying that I'm just trying to envision what I would do.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead, sure.
I think we're talking, I'll give you another viewpoint, a 5% participation rate. One of the areas I think that this is really key is I think most people in San Carlos try to do the right things for recycling and disposable of hazardous items. People move every, what, on the average of every seven or 12 years? I think when people are moving out or moving in, I mean, you try to do the best you can, but the garage is always the last, and that's when you got the pesticides and the gas and the oils. And this is the scary stuff that goes into the landfill. And so, again, I think it's really positioned well. It's really for the 95% of people. It's the people who kind of run out of time, the people who are moving, the people who have higher volumes of this kind of stuff. But to me, it's very attractive because it may only be a 5% participation, but the types of stuff that would normally, that could just get thrown in a, covered in a black plastic bag and thrown in your garbage can, is pretty scary stuff. And it's really important not, to prevent as much as we can.
Yeah, no, again, I'm not speaking against it. The other thing is, is, you know, in two years, they may find out this isn't working, and they're gonna walk away.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if they don't get enough, if they don't get enough, I mean, they've, they're a for-profit company, so they're gonna have to figure out the costs and.
Well, that's true, although my understanding is they do this in quite a few communities across the country, so they're apparently very familiar with this business.
Well, I certainly would entertain a recommendation from someone on the council that we, you know, they come back to us, you know, as you mentioned, in later time of this year to possibly have it possibly go into effect next year. So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Because it was mentioned that other cities are also looking at this.
Mm-hmm.
And so the thought that comes to my mind is, you know, the more, also the more cities that participate in the program, the lower the costs will be. And perhaps this is something that, through the mayor, we could suggest for an agenda item with Council of Cities, or?
Well, maybe it's.
Something like that, to make sure that when we all go in, we all go in and help lower the costs.
I think it's gonna go through SBWMA is what you're speaking about, right?
Yeah, Councilmember Grokot, to that point, it's a great one. They're looking to establish a location in San Mateo County based on the scale of number of cities. If they can justify it, they're gonna do that here, and that will ensure reduced costs for a longer period of time for the cities that sign on initially. So that's our perspective, and hopefully we can package it in a way that works for the company as well as the agencies that have expressed an interest, which are, as Brian mentioned, about eight or nine so far.
So through the mayor's point, with the SBWMA contract, is that, do we see that as enough outreach? Or could we do something? That's what I suggested, Council of Cities, you know, some other ways to get the staff and council members from these various cities aware of the program. And something like Council of Cities even goes, I think, a little beyond SBWMA, right?
Well, certainly does. It has all 20 cities in the county.
Right.
I think what I hear Councilmember Grokot saying is maybe the program could be put on with Council of Cities.
Sure.
I think there's a couple of possibilities. One is, one of the things we've been doing at SBWMA recently is having some evening briefings that they, you know, receptions for council members. I know several of you were at the last one that they did. Perhaps we could do that. Or I'm sure Mr. Feldman and the vendor would love to go to the Council of Cities and talk to all 20 agencies. I can tell you that I think as rate review gets closer, we'll see more cities look at it. And as far as our role, as you know, we tend to be the first cities in many of these programs, and if you give us the green light tonight, you'll be the first again on this one. So you're calling.
Well, I think the green light is that you want, we wanna come back with some, you know, ideas and whatever.
We're giving the amber light.
Yeah, the amber light. And the other thing is, Mr. Feldman, I certainly, if you contact the Council of Cities, that'd be a great, when we have our monthly dinners, that'd be perfect because then you'd reach the other eight cities, actually nine, because there's only 11 cities in a county in the SBWMA. I'm sure they're somewhat aware of it, but it would be a real, it would be aware of it, and I think there'd be a lot of reception to the whole thing. So, great, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, moving on. I'm sorry.
10A, we did 10A, didn't we?
Okay, Pat, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pat. Keep it short, please.
10A. I'm sorry.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. The more convenient it is, the more people will comply. Mr. Royce is exactly right that people get fed up with those light bulbs that have been sitting around for six months, and they haven't remembered to take them with them to Home Depot and get them properly recycled, and they put them in a black plastic bag and put them in the garbage can. This came up at GPAC, and we said, don't just educate people that they can make an appointment and go to Tower Road to drop this stuff off when they can come up with a time the Tower Road's open and they can get there. Make it easy, and they will do it. People like me and Suzanne will hold on to that mercury thermometer for 20 years before we throw it in the garbage can. We're the exception. A lot of people are throwing a lot of really nasty stuff in the landfill. And if you make it easy for them, they won't do that.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move on to item 10B, Discussion of Customer Billing Cycle and Billing Method Options in Proposed Solid Waste Franchise Agreement between Recology San Mateo County, NorCal, and the City of San Carlos for New Solid Waste Collection Services. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As council will recall, and actually Councilmember Grokot just mentioned, at your previous meeting, we went through the service options for the upcoming Recology franchise, and we got direction from the council on all but one item, which you asked to bring back, and this is the question of billing. As the staff report notes, we have two categories of customers when it comes to billing, and they're handled, currently handled differently. In the case of commercial customers and multi-residential complexes, billing is done monthly in arrears. In the case of single-family residential customers, it is done quarterly in advance. As the staff report notes, after hearing some comments from council, excuse me, and also getting a letter from the vice mayor, which is attached, staff has worked with Recology and SBWMA, and there's a couple of options that we can pursue. And tonight, we'd like to get some direction from council in anticipation of the full franchise coming back to you at your September 15th meeting. One is the question of billing in advance or in arrears, and Recology has indicated to staff that if we want to make that change, starting with the new agreement in 2011, we can do that. There would be a one-time cost of adjustment, but that would be relatively minor. The other discussion has to do with the billing frequency, whether it's days at 90 days, whether it goes to 45 days, as I believe the vice mayor talked about in his letter, or even 30 days, as we do with commercial and multifamily. There, the main difference in cost would be the frequency of billing, because as you probably recall from our previous discussion, we are asking the current, both the current vendor and the future vendor, Recology, to pay for billing. So, obviously, if you're billing, you know, nine or 12 times a year instead of four, obviously the billing costs go up. And staff estimates that if we went all the way to monthly billing, that would be coincidentally roughly the same cost as the previous item, about 45 cents, or I think in this case, 44 cents per month per subscriber for single family. And if we went to, say, 45 days, it would be roughly 22 cents a month, or that would be about a 1% increase. So, the costs are relatively minor here. And again, the question for the council is to provide direction to staff on the future franchise document that you'll see in September in terms of, you know, in advance or in arrears, and do you want it 30, 45, or 90 days? From the staff's perspective, totally up to the council.
Mr. Moore, thank you.
Mr. Royce? Yeah, if I could just add, I'm not going to go through the two-page letter I wrote, but hit some highlights here. This was a proposal that I had made, and of course, what drove it were kind of accounting principles in which generally, when products are shipped or services are rendered, they're done, and then the invoicing is prepared, and payment occurs after. If you consider more services, most of the services we receive, like your PG&E, your water bill, your Comcast, pretty much even if you have your tree pruned and the guy comes out and does it, you receive the service and then you pay thereafter. I, of course, shared some of these concerns with the SBWMA. There was a response in four items, which I go through in a letter, but a couple of the main items were, one, they talked about cash flow, how important that is to the company, and it is important to the company, but my point is it's also important to our customers, who actually have to now prepay ahead of time for that next quarter's service. The other item, which I didn't really realize, I thought that was very important, is we're actually creating two policies here. We actually allow businesses and multi-residentials to actually pay like we pay our normal bills. You receive the service and you pay thereafter. And so, I'm questioning why this got initiated earlier on, probably four to five years ago. I think it was done when BFI shifted to Allied, but to me, I'd have trouble explaining to a residential customer why businesses were able to negotiate paying under a standard format after the service is rendered, and why they have to prepay on a quarterly basis. To me, also, the only argument that I would have would be the cost. I'm not going to, I could talk 10 minutes about cost, but in theory, as I explained in the letter, the company, the existing company and our new company, on their financial statements and balance sheet, has their, has our money already. So, if you were to pick at any point of time at a closing month, there is generally two to three months of prepayments for residential, not for businesses and multi-residential, but for residential, that is there, that is not recorded as revenue yet. It's actually a prepaid deposit. And that money should actually transfer to the new company. So, they already have the money, there should be no cost. If they booked it as revenue, I'd like to have a discussion with their CPA or the SEC, where they're actually booking revenues two to three months ahead of time before the service is provided. So, I would argue very, very strongly from a cost point of view. And I'll close by just saying that, you know, this is no big deal, but to me, it's just the ethical part of how we treat customers and how we represent them. Why are we treating them differently? I think our customers in San Carlos should pay for all of our services, like, under a standard format. And there is a risk always that if customers find out that they're unique in garbage services, they receive great garbage services and, you know, all this other great stuff, but then they get bad press because they're basically precharging or getting people's money a month before the service is rendered. I just think it's just not worth the bad press that our company, Recology, and basically the company that we chose to actually provide the service. So, my recommendation would be to go back, hit on the no cost, and recommend something fair. I do not recommend going to monthly. I think they've made great decisions on a quarterly billing because it's such a small billing. And however, with the quarterly billing, have cash due at a reasonable time in the middle of that cycle. You're basically going through part of that quarter where you haven't paid, you're paying more towards the middle part of that quarter, and, you know, rather than waiting, of course, until the end of the quarter. I think some middle ground there is fairly fair to both the company and the customer of San Carlos.
Okay. Other questions, Mr. Moore? Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Mayor, I just saw one point that there would be a charge, a one-time charge to customers if the billing method is changed. It struck me as a, I thought it was kind of humorous because there's no customers yet for this new company. The new customers don't exist. If, instead of having two different types of billing, one for business and one for residents, we say we want one billing due after the service is delivered, it strikes me that's simpler. So, the notion of getting charged to make the life of a billing department simpler strikes me as odd. It doesn't make sense to me, and it's also, oh, we're changing the billing cycle, this is a new company, this is a new contract, you don't have customers. Where's the change? That struck me as odd. I'd be happy to support Mr. Royce in this. Again, I can't blame a company for asking for money upfront. I think every company would, but Mr. Royce makes some good points, I'd be happy to support him in this.
Mr. Grokot, any questions of staff?
Well, the only, yeah, a couple. One, I wonder how this is kept, I was never aware of this until Mr. Royce brought it up, but now knowing about it, how do they account for when people move, sell their homes, someone else moves in? Is this all, somebody get a rebate check or...
Let me ask perhaps Mr. Feldman to comment on it.
It's my understanding that's how your current services are. If you pay in advance and then you move in that term, then you're entitled to a prorated recovery of the services you didn't get. That's how it would work in the future.
But you have to ask for it.
Of course.
Not of course. You have to ask, that's not of course, Mr. Feldman.
I concur.
You know, I might want to be on the other side of the issue until I hear something like that.
A lot of people may not ask because they may not realize what's going on, yes.
Through the chair, I guess the return fee would probably, there's probably some sort of processing fee, and then it takes six to eight weeks to get a check?
No, I don't think that's, I'm not...
I'm not going to see it in a week.
Yeah, I don't know offhand.
Go ahead. So, the other, I guess it's not really a question, it's a comment. I am aware of, there are some services that you pay in advance, like your, someone mentioned Comcast. I think Comcast, you're actually paying a month in advance before you get the service.
Yeah, you're right.
But it's only, it's only a month in advance, it's not...
That's correct.
A quarterly.
When you find out you prepay.
That's correct.
Yeah, you prepay an extra month. So, I don't know. I don't, I agree with Mr. Royce, I don't think it's fair to be paying some, you know, for a service that far in advance for, you know, on a quarterly basis.
Right.
So, I would be for switching it around, I guess keeping it then at the quarter. Do I understand the report correct, that if we kept it at quarterly, then there would be no extra, the charge? The extra charge is because at monthly, you have to do it more frequently, right? So, and I would, I would ask the same question as Mr. Ahmad. What's this one-time charge? What's that for?
Okay, sounds like that may not be an issue. Could I ask a question? Are we speaking about, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
I've got a couple of questions. Are we speaking about with Allied now, or are we speaking about with Recology on...
How about with Recology?
Okay. Mr. Gasperini, I apologize, but I'm going to put you on the spot up here. Could you step up for a minute? You might be able to answer some questions directly, because you will be the provider. And if you don't know the answer, I understand that, I didn't call you ahead of time on this, so. What is your, what is the company policy for if Mr. Jones moves out? I assume Mr. Jones has to call and ask for a refund, and I assume it gets to Mr. Jones in a, less than a month, I assume, or something like that, since he's prepaid his garbage fee?
Yeah, I'm Gino Gasperini with Recology, San Mateo County. That call would come in, and then the paperwork process would started to get a rebate or whatever remaining dollars he had on his, on his account.
Do you have any idea what timeframe that is, or...
You know, from what I've seen in our particular company, I can't speak for Allied, to me, it's an immediate paper process to get started.
Within a week or so, when they cut checks next, which is probably once a week. Again, I'm just, because you will be the carrier, so I...
No, I understand.
There's no sense to ask Allied when they're going to be gone in a while. What do other cities do? I mean, we have, with SBWMA, I guess, you know, right now, our contract, all the 12 entities pay this way for their single-family homes. What does Recology do in other cities that they're operating in?
It can vary, just as we're discussing right here. And I think as we went through the RFP process, this was the established rate and payment schedule for commercial and residential just going forward. So, that's how we applied the RFP process and the cost for that.
Okay, but you do, you are, in other cities, they do things differently.
You know, a lot of them do it this particular way. A lot of cities, East Palo Alto comes in to play in mind, they do it on their tax roll. So, they're actually, people are actually paying through their tax roll.
In San Francisco...
And Fair Oaks as well.
Right, now, you do San Francisco, right?
We do San Francisco.
San Francisco, how do they pay?
You know, I don't know with this.
Okay, no, again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
You're in San Mateo County. Do you know why it would be different for homes and multi-unit? I mean, I know that's what Allied did, but that seems, it doesn't seem, I don't understand the...
You know, it very well, four units and less considered residential, billed individually, five and above considered commercial, again, just the way the industry, the way the system and the billing was set up.
And you do that differently in each city that you, or it could be, with the you serve?
I think that's kind of standard as it is now, and I think many times what happens is those multifamily units have a larger container, so it's actually one bill, not individually billed, so it may go to the property owner. You know, the cost is associated with the larger container instead of individual cans in front of each residence.
So, that's the logic, is the owner isn't necessarily going to sell his building in a couple of weeks, or move, or whatever, and he's paying the garbage bills, so...
That's kind of, I would think, the norm.
So, that's why they would be billed on a monthly basis or on a current basis, whereas the homeowner would be billed in a different way?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
But I figured you are going to be the carrier, so I thought I'd ask the question. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gasperini. Gentlemen, what do you want to do on this?
Make a motion?
Whatever. Do we need a motion on this? Mr. Rubens?
I think just direction would be fine.
It looks like it's just a discussion item, so direction.
Direction?
I think what staff is looking for is, you know, direction from council in advance or in arrears, and 30, 45, or 90 days, you know, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, so, again, if I could articulate a recommendation, if others would agree, we'll find out, would be to maintain the quarterly invoicing, and it makes sense, not go to monthly. And secondly, is to provide, what do you call it?
In arrears?
A payment cycle, what's, they have a term for it, where it, where it's actually paid somewhere more in the middle term of when the service is provided, payment is due more towards the middle of the quarter. Does that give you clarity?
Well, I think we're clear on the in arrears, paying after the service, but I guess I'm a little unclear about in the middle because it's...
That we change, that we change it, that there is a change from prepayment...
Right.
To, actually, here, I'll get the wording right here.
In arrears, right.
I'll put it in here. That, I'll just say that service is shifted, that payment due is shifted 45 days from the current payment cycle.
So, it would be a 45-day cycle?
45 days, because that's basically the middle of the 90 days.
And, Mr. Moore, I apologize, question, how much is that going to cost?
About 1%.
So, it's going to be 22, 22 cents a month?
Yeah.
Okay. Through the chair.
I don't argue on that, though.
See, I'm not sure I'm following at the moment, not necessarily that could be important, but what I'm hearing is, is that Councilmember Royce is asking that there be 90 days for the billing cycle, and that we bill 45 days into that cycle. So, in effect, if I'm hearing you correct, you would be billing half in, half in...
Payment due. I'm saying that payment due, I'm only considering when payment would be due.
But what I'm understanding is that if we were to do it the way that you've asked, we'd be paying for 45 days in arrears and 45 days in advance. We'd be billing midterm, but that we'd only be billing every three months.
Billing every quarter.
Every quarter. But, yeah, that the due date on the bill is 45 days after the service has begun. And so, the question then becomes, I mean, we're only billing quarterly, so there's no increased cost for the billing process because that remains the same. The question is whether or not there is any cost associated with the capitalization or the carrying cost for that one-time setup.
Yes.
They did the initial bid on the premise that they were going to be getting 90 days cash in advance, and really, all, you know, they're going to be asked to provide for 45 days of service, then they would get the cash, and then they would provide the 45 days of service after that cash has arrived. So, there might be a one-time adjustment in comparison to the other 11 cities with respect to that setup cost.
Yeah, so, Mark, just to discuss your point, we could go back to research this, but I would feel pretty confident that when this change was made with BFI to Allied, I didn't see any credit on my bill because they had more of my money. So, my proposal is, is proposal to do it, and our expectation is there is no cost. If there's cost, then have them come back to us.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
That's my position.
I understand.
So, that's one person. Do I hear any other votes somewhere, or comments, or questions, or...
Generally speaking, Mr. Mayor, I support the quarterly billing. I'd kind of go, it should be in arrears or it should be upfront. Splitting the baby kind of sounds a little strange, so if business customers are paying in arrears, let's just have one way to pay in San Carlos and call it a day. It doesn't make sense to have two different ways to pay. Again, if status quo is fine, in terms of billing cycles, I think 90 days strikes the council as appropriate. I'd be happy to support if you want to go, you know, all customers in San Carlos, whether you're business or residential, bill in arrears, or if you want to keep status quo, we're good.
Does, I'm sorry, do the multi-unit bills, are they quarterly also? No, they're monthly, right?
Really?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Monthly in arrears.
Yeah, so, you know, Mr. Grokot, go ahead, I'll go last, so. Any ideas?
I have one.
You have one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
You may not like it, but I have one.
All right. Well, I, what I thought Mr. Royce was saying is that you'd receive your bill 45 days into the quarter, and then you'd have a certain amount of time to pay it, say 30 days. So, by the time you've paid your bill, you've just about gotten all the service you're going to get that you've, that you've paid for. And if that's the case, I, that's, that's what I would agree to, a system like that.
You know, and I realize that this isn't the, as important as artificial turf, but I, I don't know, I...
Well, why not?
Exactly. But I, once again, we're 44 cents here, 22 cents here, 5% there, 12% there. Gosh darn, this garbage thing, I mean, we have the food scraps thing that kicked it up, and supposedly, our new contract's going to be less than everybody else's because we have the food scraps thing. All of a sudden, it's going to start to, I realize we're talking cents here, but it just keeps going up. I have not had one person call me in four years saying, I have had them call me and say, why didn't you pick up my garbage? But I haven't had anybody call up and say, darn it, they're making money on me here by holding my money. And again, your point is well taken, I'm not criticizing it, but I don't, I don't necessarily believe that, I mean, it just seems like a lot of trouble, and they're going to charge us for it, to change it for our city only relative to, Mr. Moore indicated that he brought it up to the SBWMA board, the 12 people, and nobody said anything. So, I, again, we're different, and like every other city is. I just, I don't think I can support this one, but if there's a consensus of three, I mean, I understand, I can count, certainly bring it back and vote on it and so on, but I, I think that this is, for the amount of money that we're, that you're saving relative to their, you holding their money, I'm not, I mean, I could do the math, but I'm not going to. I'm not sure that it works out, that it costs you more than what you're making on the money. But I haven't done the math, so I should have, I guess. But anyway, so, what do you gentlemen want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Mayor, just procedurally, I think where we are is, we're seeking direction from the council so that we can negotiate in the franchise agreement with Recology. So, it, we want to, I think we've got some guidance to discuss this as an option, but I don't think you really have the final numbers and what it's going to mean at this time. But I think we'll bring that back to you as part of the contract, so you, I don't think it'll be a problem to provide you both numbers so you can see what they are.
Sure, we can discuss it in further detail then.
Yeah, I'd just like ideally to get some clarity in terms of your expectations as far as advance or arrears in the billing period, because the more, the more variables we have, I think when this comes back on 15th, we'll have more, you know.
I'll just add to the, to the mayor's point, I would be, I'd like to support some flexibility in the billing options. I think everybody's in favor of quarterly, but I would like to see, to the mayor's point, if there are going to be charges to it, I would like to be aware of those.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, and then I'd like to, and I don't, I didn't look at the model agreement or our agreement, but it may be that within the, that ninety-day billing in advance, that there really isn't a meaningful penalty for the consumer, so they might really have a lot more time than we're thinking about to pay that bill. So they have the option of paying it in advance, but they may not really have a meaningful penalty if they pay towards the end of the quarter, for instance. So I'd want to make sure we bring that to you, and so that it's, maybe there's a way not to affect the rate and make it so the bill is.
We should probably find out from, and I don't mean to put you on the spot again, Mr. Gasparini, I'm not going to do that, from Recology, how, or even for Allied, how they do it now, and from Recology, how they would do it in the future, that's a good point. Of how, if there is a penalty, or if there's a late charge, or what is the, you know, what is the due date of, I never, I never really pay attention to a due date on that, I just get the bill, and in a couple of weeks I pay it, so, but again, there may be a due date on there, and there may be charges that are charged against it. So, so we're going to bring this back then and discuss it. Okay, good, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, so we move on to item ten C, which is consideration of an impact of the state budget revenue rate on the city of San Carlos, San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, and options for the city council and the redevelopment agency to address the loss of city and agency funds. How long is your presentation, Mr. Moore?
Not very long. Mayor, members of council, you've got a staff report on the state budget, and I thought I'd give you just a quick update in terms of what happened and what didn't, just so you had the latest information before we get into a discussion. As you know from our earlier staff report, the latest state budget, we've had three now in the last twelve months, was claimed to address twenty-four billion of a twenty-six billion dollar shortfall, however, it's been widely reported that only half of that goal was really achieved, that the balance was really, you know, done through borrowing gimmicks. So obviously, going into this budget, they're going to start off with a significant deficit. As a result of that, we've been told by different players in this discussion that there will be another state budget crisis, pretty much guaranteed, the only question is when. The Paul McIntosh, who's the director of CSAC, the county group, believes that the next budget crisis will be in October. The governor says, no, that this will last a whole six months, and the next budget crisis will be in January. The point is, we're going to see this all over again very soon, with at least a thirteen to fifteen billion dollar problem again. In terms of what is currently in front of the governor, and again, it is rumored that he could sign this as early as tomorrow sometime, or perhaps later this week, there are several impacts to the city, some of which have been reported, and some of which we just learned frankly late today. The most serious of which is the so-called, or two things that are serious, one is the so-called Prop 1A suspension, which will cost one point nine billion statewide, the second of which is the so-called supplemental ERAF for redevelopment, or the SERAF as they're now calling it, which would be one point seven billion dollars this year and three hundred fifty million dollars next year. The third item, which is relatively minor, is the suspension of several state mandates, including animal adoption, stolen vehicle notification, and DNA collection, most of which I believe will affect the counties rather than the cities. And finally, something we just discovered today is a delay in the payment of gas tax funds to cities and counties. This is something the state did last year. Their argument is that, first of all, they don't really have to pay us gas tax till towards the end of a budget year, and second, that they need the money for cash flow purposes to meet their payroll. So what they're proposing is very similar to what we saw last year, that is, for the first six months of the budget year, namely from this month through the end of this calendar year, we will not receive any gas tax money, instead it will be held by the state. Additionally, the quarterly payments in October and January will also be held by the state, and we will get those on May tenth. So in effect, we will not see our gas tax money for six months. And then finally, as I note, the original loss of almost two billion dollars in the gas tax money over two years, or ninety-six percent of our allocation, was not approved. Oops, wrong way. So to go through these quickly in order, the Proposition 1A suspension, this represents an eight percent loss of the city's property tax, sales tax, and vehicle in lieu money. It's a one-time loss for the city of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. The rules of Prop 1A, for those of you don't recall, is that once the money is taken from the cities, it cannot be taken again until it is fully repaid with interest within a three-year period. The state has indicated that because of their budget shortfall, they would not plan to pay any of this money back to the city until year three, or kind of the last minute. The money also cannot be taken more than twice in a ten-year period, which means that if the money is repaid in year three, and the state does a second taking, that once the second taking occurs, that's it for the rest of that decade. There are questions as far as whether or not the state actually will have the money to repay the cities in the third year, and also a question about whether or not cities, counties, and districts could securitize, or in other words, borrow against the state's promise to pay in year three. And this slide here from the Legislative Analyst Office would explain to you why it is questionable whether the state will have the money, because as you can see, on top of the twenty-six billion dollar deficit, it is projected that in the next five years, the state's annual operating budget will be down another twenty-eight billion dollars on top of that. Talk about the redevelopment impact on San Carlos, the so-called supplemental ERAF, which is the biggest number we'll talk about tonight. The impact on San Carlos will be one point six million dollars in the current year, and three hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year. The three hundred and thirty thousand will probably look familiar to you, because as you'll recall, last year, the state tried to take the same amount of money, the three hundred and thirty thousand, until a court found that it was illegal and unconstitutional. And as you'll hear in a minute, the league still believes that that to be the case. The terms under this particular program, the cities, or, excuse me, the redevelopment agencies will have to make a payment on May tenth of each year. A failure to pay the payment in either year will result in increasing the housing set aside for each city, the affordable housing money from twenty to twenty-five percent, and it will also result in what is called the death penalty, which we'll get to in a minute. Another option that cities have, if they choose, is that the housing fund, if it has more money than the redevelopment fund, can pay for the hit of the loss of these monies. However, the redevelopment agency would have to repay their housing fund by June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. Also, if the two payments are made under this program, the redevelopment agency's life is automatically extended for one year. So in other words, it would be one year longer than it is today. In terms of the so-called death penalty, if you fail to pay either year, what happens is, failure to pay means you cannot pass a new redevelopment plan, spending the money. You cannot amend the plan to add territory, probably something we're not likely to do. You cannot issue redevelopment bonds, you cannot encumber funds, or expend any monies derived from any source to pay prepaid indebtedness, contractual obligations, or more than seventy-five percent of what you're currently spending on agency activities, and the so-called death penalty lasts until the state is paid. The key points here, as we indicated in the original staff report, is the Redevelopment Association and the League of Cities believe that, like last year's proposal, this proposal is also illegal and unconstitutional and should be challenged. And the CRA, the California Redevelopment Association, has indicated that if the state proceeds on this basis, that they will be filing a lawsuit in early August, and they will be inviting us to participate in that lawsuit. In terms of next steps and impacts the city has, in the case of the Prop 1A money, one of the options that the city has is we do have a so-called economic uncertainties reserve fund, and one of the things that the council may wish to consider at mid-year, when you look at this in detail in February, is to perhaps use some of those reserve funds to take care of this Prop 1A issue, since it is in fact a one-time issue. In the case of the redevelopment hit, which would be one point six million this year and three hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year, we have a two-point-five million dollar balance in the redevelopment agency itself, and we have another one point six million dollars in the housing redevelopment money, so we have sufficient balance to pay for both of the hits if we choose to do that on a one-time basis. And indeed, as the report notes, we may wish to treat this as a one-time hit and await the lawsuit decision, because if the lawsuit ends up as it did last year, we'll end up losing none of the money, since it is, it may indeed be deemed to be illegal and unallowed as it was before. Staff also believes that if, on the other hand, either the law is not challenged, or the cities lose the lawsuit, it raises some pretty interesting questions, we think, at the staff level, we talked about this this afternoon, about the continued viability of redevelopment agencies in general. This particular hit equals about thirty percent of each redevelopment agency's funds across the state, and if the state comes back in January and decides to take another thirty percent, or whatever number they might make up, you can see that pretty quickly the redevelopment funds, both ongoing and any reserves, could be wiped out pretty quickly by the state. It also obviously raises some corollary questions about the city's ability to do affordable housing units outside of our inclusionary zoning, because obviously we use the twenty percent money for that purpose. So again, key questions here to review between now and our mid-year adjustment are, will the state take more funds from the city in January when the next budget crisis arrives? What kind of money will that be? Will it be the road money, which they didn't take this time, but they could take next time? Will it be more redevelopment money? We don't know yet, and obviously, will the lawsuit be successful? So one of the options that we think is most attractive for the council is to obviously discuss this, but perhaps to, prior to taking action, to wait and see where we are in February, since by then we'll be on the other side of the next state hit, and we may also know how the lawsuit went. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, or hear any discussion the council may offer.
Questions, Mr. Ahmad?
I'm just kind of curious, I mean, if IOUs are good enough for the state controller, can we send them one?
We can send them one, I'm not sure they'll accept them.
Yeah, beyond that, yeah, just, I threw open my mouth a little bit listening to this, so we'll move on.
Mr. Grokot, questions?
Yeah, two questions, one is, the last time there was a lawsuit, what was the duration, how long did that take to litigate and get a decision and so forth?
That I don't know, we'd have to research it.
Okay, and then the other question is, I think there was something up there about this. Not that we would necessarily need to do this, because you've indicated the RDA, if we have to take the hit, can take it. And even in the general fund, we have reserves to handle something like this. But I suppose there could be an option, and I didn't understand your question up there, whether it was addressing legality or viability of taking what then the state would owe us, they have to pay us back, one would think.
Right.
With interest, and you could sell that as a note to somebody else who, you know, an investor, or somebody who says, "Yeah, I'm willing to take that risk, I'll buy that note", is, you know, "Because I'm going to get the three percent interest." So was that a question of legality or viability of doing something like that?
Okay, well, let me separate the two items. The first item, the taking of the Prop 1A money, sales tax, property tax, vehicle, is clearly legal. It can be done during an emergency. The state has deemed their current situation to be emergency. I think others have argued that since their budget hasn't been balanced in years, maybe it's not such an emergency, but putting that aside, once they take the money, it is truly a one-time hit, because now there's a two-year cooling off period, if you will, they can't take the money again for a couple of years. The state budget bill talks about allowing the cities to borrow, as Councilmember Grokot suggests, but there are a number of questions, including if you did borrow against it, because there are costs, as you know, to hire a bond counsel and all of that, that some financial analysts have estimated that you may end up with ninety-five percent of, you know, what you lost. And so if you have one-time reserves, as we do, it might be wiser to just, you know, take the one-time hit and then wait for the money to come back with interest. But there, I think, because this whole area of suspending Prop 1A has never been done before, we're all in new territory, so we'll all, I think, learn together.
However, we, by taking the hit, we, there's opportunity costs there too, because the eight thirty-seven's not in our bank account earning interest, which it's doing now, maybe the, I don't know what our current interest rate is with our investments, but we lose that, so.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
And I think that's something we'd have to have the finance staff analyze.
All right.
Nothing, very nice job.
Yeah, no, I appreciate also the summation in twenty-five words or less. The question I have is, of course, we don't, we don't ever get, the city never gets the, we don't control the property tax money or the sales tax money, it comes through either the state or the county, so we never see that. It's just taken away, gone. When will we have to write, though, assume the budget is signed, when would we have to write the check for the redevelopment agency?
My understanding.
Or would we wait and say, "We're not going to pay you until the court case is done"?
Well, the key dates are in December, in other words, before this year is out, we have to tell the state how we might pay them. In other words, do we have enough money to pay them? And I think given.
We have enough money, but do we pay them? That's my question, I guess.
How can we drag our feet?
Yeah, or do we drag our feet, I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, I think, I think what will happen is, the money is actually paid next May, the redevelopment money.
Okay.
But by December, this council or this community has to make a finding on whether or not we have the money to pay it. And I'm assuming that because clearly we have several ways to pay it, we will make such a finding. So we will say to the state, in theory, I mean, we're obviously going to bring this to the council, but theoretically, we'll come to the council and say, much as we just did here, there are several ways for us to pay the money, we have the money, and then next May, presuming that the lawsuit hasn't been settled by then, we'll have to.
So the cash flow, I'm trying to look at the cash flow, the cash flow would be next May?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm getting, I apologize, I didn't ask that question very well. Okay, any other questions?
You want a quick one, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
The eight hundred and thirty thousand coming out of 1A.
Yes.
There's no real challenge to that, we know it's going to happen.
Correct.
Recommendation right now is to pull it out of the economic uncertainty reserves. Now, we dipped into those reserves approximately five hundred thousand dollars already for this year's budget?
I believe that's true.
That's correct.
And so what is the remaining balance after this hit?
I believe it's about two and a half million.
After this hit?
Correct. When, after, I'm sorry, after the half million, so this would be one point seven million, or one point six, something like that, after this hit.
Okay, and so, predictions might dictate that we, the state of California is not going to get better next year. You know, they've enjoyed raiding money at this point, we've got to believe they're going to continue, so.
Well, they can't take it again.
Well, not from this fund.
Okay, I got it, I got it. I'm sorry.
They're creative.
I got it.
Correct, yeah, I think the places that they may come next time is they may hit redevelopment again, unless we sue them, and they may bring back the gas tax hit. Now, the other thing to remember about the gas tax, by the way, is, you know, we do have a half-cent sales tax in this county, Measure A. So in addition to getting about half a million a year from gas tax, we also get another half million from Measure A. So the net effect of all this would be, if we lost some of the, some or all of the money, as was originally proposed, we'd still have Measure A, and what we'd see is probably, rather than a million dollars a year roughly for roadwork, we'd end up with like half that amount.
So again, the gas tax money is not a general fund effect, that's Fund.
Fund sixteen.
Thank you. However, the Economic Uncertainty Fund is absolutely going to hit our general fund.
Correct.
At some point in time, it might be interesting just to postulate, because I'm certain that the folks in the legislature are, how many other ways our general fund could be under attack?
That's true, although the good news is our major revenue, the big three, sales tax, property tax, and vehicle, are all protected under 1A. So once they hit us, which they're going to do, for the maximum eight percent, they now have a three-year timeout.
Through the chair, I mean, this does get very complicated, and it is outrageous. I mean, if you look at the gas tax, for example, the vast majority of that money we use for just resurfacing streets. However, you know, they take away that money, then we don't have money to resurface the streets, and then we have to fill the potholes, because those are going to form more, or more quickly. The problem is, is that we do use some of the gas tax money for fixing potholes. And so the original proposal was to take ninety-six percent of the gas tax. Now, that would have affected the general fund, because we currently use some of the gas tax to pay for the expenses of the maintenance people that fix the potholes, and if we don't have the gas tax money, then the general fund would have to pick up that expense. On the redevelopment side, what's being proposed here? They talk about the death penalty if we don't comply. I mean, the fact of the matter is, in my estimation, if we comply, if cities are subjected, or redevelopment agencies are subjected to this kind of tactic, it's the death penalty anyhow, because you don't know whether or not next year they're going to come take that one point three million dollars or not. You can't do projects, you can't plan or activate anything that might be a long-term effort to address the whole purpose for redevelopment, to address the blight in your community. And once you take that away, or the security of that undermining and foundation of your agency out of play, you've destroyed your ability to move forward in any kind of a constructive way. This is very, very serious, and, you know, I would hope, we would probably bring something back in short order that would give our redevelopment agency the chance to chime in and support the CRA in its efforts to challenge this particular effort on behalf of the state.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do have a question, because Mr. Moore mentioned monies that we get through, the other, the gas tax money that comes through the other channels. And it made me think, to ask this question, what is the impact of the state budget and what they're doing to cities and counties on other entities that we are a part of, like CCAG or ABAG? to cities and counties on other entities that we are a part of, like CCAG or ABAG? Is there an impact there, and then that would trickle down to us in terms of, like with ABAG or insurance, or, or CCAG, some of our grant funding, or other sources that, that we go to?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say at this point, I know certainly one of the proposals that we heard last week was the notion of taking some so-called 1B money that the voters passed a couple of years ago, transit money, and giving it to the cities as they were taking our gas tax money. If they did something like that, that clearly would affect CCAG and the grants that we get for major road work, El Camino Real, et cetera. Because that all was taken off the table, at this point, that impact isn't there. But I think certainly, listening to what we've heard from the league, the, the group that's really, would have been impacted had that gas tax hit happened, is the cities that are not in counties with so-called self-help or half-cent sales taxes. I mean, we're, we're somewhat buffered, I think, because even though we would have had to slash our resurfacing by half, and then as the city manager notes, had some general fund impact as well, we wouldn't have been wiped out altogether. And I know that's probably not much comfort for you, but at least there's some solace, I guess we could say...
Not dead yet.
...in terms of being a self-help county.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, so we'll move, move on now, the next item is item eleven, which we now adjourn to closed session, or do we just move to closed session?
We're moving to closed session, we need to come out and report.
Okay, so we won't adjourn to closed session, we'll move to closed session.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens, so I don't screw that up.